All right, we're still waiting for one member, he's on his way. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. Welcome, Flaw. Thank you for participating tonight. Aaron, do you want to give us a...
Yeah, do we maybe just want to do quick introductions first?
Sure, yeah, I guess we can't, I guess we all got named eggs, but maybe you guys want to start and go around the room.
Dustin Jagish with Jagish Lawn Care, this one of the bit litters, so I'm just here to tell this and try to figure out what's all happening.
Avery Brunges, Park of Flaw and Forest Lake Baseball.
Tony Kaiser with Forest Lake Baseball.
Jeremy Trapp, Forest Lake Baseball.
Mayor Plous, Flaw Vice President.
Al Kozak, Flaw Board and Fastpitch.
Dwayne DeBurger for Flaw Board Member.
Al Howey, President of Flaw.
Al, Jack McKenzie, Parks, Lakes, Trails Commission.
Tim Shinian, Parks, Trails, Lakes Commission.
Jason Steenblatt, Parks, Lakes, Trails Commission.
Jackie McNamara, Park, Lakes, Trails Commission.
Teri Steenblatt, Park, Lakes, Trails Commission.
Jamie Michio, City's Park and Recreation Coordinator.
Dan Adam, Assistant to the City Administrator.
Dave Adams, Public Works Superintendent.
Eric Barris, City Administrator.
Martin, City Council.
Ben Winnick, Mayor.
Ed Agner, City Council.
Sam Mosting, City Council.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, for coming here. It's kind of a, it's going to be a tough night out, right? It sounds like we're getting the cold air coming in and everything, and I guess we'll see how that treats us. But what we're going to do here tonight is just talk about our partnership that we've had with Flaw for the maintenance of Fenway Fields, just from a brief historical perspective. We've had a partnership with Flaw since not long after the inception of the fields, back in 2008, 2009, to maintain these. We're on, I think, our second or third iteration of that agreement, which basically has Flaw running the complex, providing maintenance for the complex, and then the city providing some supplemental services, such as contracting for irrigation and capital improvements as needed, and some other items. And so, we wanted to kind of talk about that. We've had some good discussions, I think, since August until now. I've appreciated the Executive Committee, and Jamie in particular, and some of our Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission members, for all the feedback that they've provided, on really just trying to find the best approach to maintaining the fields in a way that is going to work out best for everybody. We have, in that period of time, taken some interim measures, just to kind of clarify different things, and we've done some evaluation and auditing of the irrigation system. I think we've tried to, just back and forth through discussions, get an understanding of what the best maintenance practices and expectations are, and I think that's an ongoing discussion. But what we're really here tonight is just to kind of, I think, continue those productive discussions. I'm going to turn it over to Jamie in a second here to go through that. I think there's at least a good working recommendation for the group to consider this evening, that would involve the selection of a third-party contractor to do the maintenance at Fenway Fields, with the city's consent, but the arrangement would be with Flaw. And so, you know, in looking at that, of course, from our perspective, you know, we want to ensure a good user experience for everybody. There was other interim measures taken this summer, including some seeding and specific work on Field Five to address some of the field conditions there. I think that particular area is on a good track, and I think we've got a good plan in place for irrigation and a good protocol in place for fertilization and so on. So, I think we've made a lot of good headway here. I think what we'll do is turn it over to Jamie to at least kind of outline what the working recommendation is for everybody to ultimately consider here, and then open it up to the group for questions. Maybe Flaw wants to provide some comments, too, as far as where they're at with various things. And so, Jamie, do you want to kind of summarize where we're at?
Great, thank you. So, as Aaron mentioned, I can kind of walk you through this process a little bit. We've had the several meetings, and I followed upon the option, too, which is outlined in your packet here. So, just to explain that a little bit more, which is the proposed way to move forward, is the city continue our current partnership with Flaw in maintaining our management agreement? This would result in Flaw working with a new maintenance provider and be responsible for all other maintenance responsibilities at Fenway Park, as outlined in the Fenway Management Agreement. So, no additional changes there, it's just really identifying a maintenance provider that would take care of the complex. We have had conversations about maybe looking at turf specialists or other lawn care companies that are highly qualified. So, myself, city staff, we helped with a closed bid, did some contracts, pricing in, just to kind of gauge some other opportunities. We had six companies provide a bid to the city, and we've had a couple joint meetings with the Flaw Executive Board to review those in greater detail. As of last week, city staff along with the Flaw Executive Board have narrowed the pool down to what we agree upon as being the top four candidates at this point. I did include the companies that we still have listed here and some of their information on pricing. Again, a lot of these details, there's a lot of details that go into it, so working with Flaw, we've got to this page here. That is where we stand of today, we have not selected a contractor. I think city staff definitely feels very comfortable with the four presented, and I know there's been a couple that we've talked about together that have been maybe the top one or two that we're considering. But ideally, the working theory is that city staff would, you know, sign off on or approve, and it's a mutually agreed-upon contractor with Flaw Executive Board. Beyond that, you'll kind of see in the option, too, the chart that's provided, the bids really focused on your main maintenance tasks and responsibilities, so mowing, fertilization, weed control, and aeration. But Flaw would still be responsible for those other tasks where, such as cleaning bathrooms, the garbage, the portables, and field preparation, just to name a few. So, you can see that outlined there. Again, that's no different than the current management agreement. So, really, that's kind of a summary, we've had several meetings. We, the working theory is to continue the management agreement, just identifying a mutually agreed-upon new maintenance provider to be contracted directly with Flaw, and Flaw would manage and oversee that maintenance schedule to make sure the tasks are being completed. So, that's where we're at as of today. And with that, I guess this would be a good time to maybe see if you want to turn it over to the Flaw Executive Board for any comments or additional comments on anything I may have missed, or if you want to turn it over to Flaw.
Well, I know at the last meeting, Aaron has already stated, in his opening statement here tonight, that things like overseeding, there are areas need to be seeded out there and such, those would all be handled then by the contractor, or is that something the city would take?
So, I think some of those additional, right now, as it states in our management agreement, any additional tasks or responsibilities over a certain threshold, I believe it's right now listed at $2,500. Flaw would then notify the city, and the city would review that task and responsibility. So, some of those other maintenance tasks, I believe, you know, working with the city, like when in future, or previous years, if you needed ag lime, you know, you contacted Dave, and Dave worked with Flaw directly on that, that's something the city purchased and supplied. So, I think a lot of those additional projects of overseeding and needing ag lime would be just talking, communicating with the city. And I think just one more point on the proposed option here, communication is going to be a significant piece to the success of this, and the city wants to make sure that, you know, the communication goes smoothly amongst the different groups. So, there is a recommended chart here of some different ways we can make sure communication runs smoothly. Level One, which would be a new group we would form, would just be a weekly touch base contact with city staff, somebody from Flaw, and then somebody from our maintenance contract, the contractor, just to make sure that the expectations are being met, and address any immediate issues or concerns that happen on a weekly basis. We'd also, Flaw recommended developing a Fenway Park Maintenance Committee, so I have that on there. City staff, two Flaw representatives, and potentially, you know, one from each of the boards to represent, so we can work together. That would be more of a monthly meeting. And then, we do currently have our Fenway Advisory Board Committee, which is representatives from all the parties here, and we would like to have that be quarterly. So, that would be a big tease to the puzzle to ensure that this runs smoothly in this new proposed option.
I have a question, really quickly. I know we talked at our Parks, Trails, Lakes Commission meeting about potentially the city contracting out a company to do the maintenance, and then us in return billing Flaw for that. What was the thought of looking at that, where a contractor would work directly with Public Works or Dave Adams, and then Dave Adams would also work with Flaw? What are the pros and cons that you guys saw to that option?
I think there's a lot of different little variations you can look at on something like this, but realistically, in that situation, I think the communication gets more difficult, right? I mean, so, the daily activity out at Fenway Fields and the maintenance, I mean, those really have to work well together. So, I think the theory is, is that Flaw is going to provide, you know, day-to-day programming of the facility, it'd be most beneficial for them to have, you know, day-to-day interactions with the maintenance piece of it.
Okay. So, my thought with that is just making sure that eventually it would not turn into Flaw being able to start doing some of the maintenance themselves to help their cost savings, and that was just something. And I think in the agreement, it kind of addresses that, so that would not happen, but I think that's kind of what we were all thinking at that moment.
I think ultimately, the main thing is to ensure that the different, you know, maintenance items outlined within the, you know, the items that were bid are done. And again, there's an operational piece to making the programming and certain maintenance activities work, too. I mean, you've got, you know, field prep and lines and, you know, that kind of stuff. And so, they really do have to kind of work, you know, hand-in-hand and closely, and I think that's where the communication piece gets to be important, because if you get too many, for cooks in the kitchen, so to speak, I think that's where some things can be challenging, and maybe the level of service falls off. I mean, option three is the option outlined within the memo that basically has the city providing service 100% and doing the coordination and doing, you know, all the activity. We feel obligated, in the course of this discussion, to price that out. We're not interested in, from a staff perspective, and we're not recommending that to you, but, you know, it is sort of important, you know, when you're dealing in a partnership, you know, what happens if the partnership doesn't continue? And so, that's really it. I mean, I think this gives you an idea of what those maintenance costs would be. We would have additional costs, of course, to do the things that I talked about from a programming perspective, but, I mean, I'd put our number at about $70,000 a year if the city exclusively was going to do this, to pick up the programming and do the maintenance contract. With that being said, the revenue piece would be entirely different with us. You know, it'd be, you know, Flaw obviously has sort of this umbrella organization for all the user groups, they have arrangements they make for the rental of the fields and how those groups are working together, and all the other programming that they solicit to bring in. You know, from our perspective, you know, we might not see the same level of revenue that they see. So, we'd be projecting some level of deficit, and honestly, until you got into it, we couldn't even tell you what that would be.
So, you're thinking that the city would do the work, or have somebody do the work, and turn to us that?
That was a discussion.
Additional seeding and stuff out there, so even this proposal gets more out of line, because that's not really in any of these statements of discussion.
Right. And I just wanted to clarify, because I know we did discuss that at the Parks Commission meeting. It was never decided that we wanted a proposal or any of that stuff, it was just a recommendation I gave, and I want to hear. So...
Well, if I'm hearing Jamie correctly, seeding and whatever else needs to take place out there, we talked to Dave, and we coordinated that through him to have it done, is that correct?
Yep.
I really like the communication strategy that's in here, because I think that's the key to success in a lot of this, and just getting people in the same room and/or having that regular communication. So, I really like that that's clear and laid out.
Is this a, is this, you're going to choose one, one, two, or three as the oversight, is that correct?
Those are three different levels of communication.
Then one of those levels would be chosen as the direction to take?
All three.
All three, okay. So, there's, so, with Flaw, you know, in this current arrangement, Flaw will be working directly with the contractor.
Okay.
So, it's just a way that city staff is still being informed of, you know, if there are any issues, all three parties involved know on a weekly basis. If there was a missed mowing because of rain, here's why we mowed on the next day, you know, those kind of situations would be level one. For level two, on a monthly basis, is more of overall, how's it going, are there things we need to tweak next month, or do we need to change the mowing day? Those are just some examples of the monthly, and then Fenway Advisory Board is more assisting and advising over the whole operation, scheduling, and whatnot. So, those, all three levels will be in place.
And is that quarterly meeting with the Fenway Advisory Board the normal? That's how they meet now?
It should be, it's been two or three times a year, so I'd like to see it quarterly, and just have that scheduled out. It's been a little more lax, two, three times a year.
Because that is my main concern, is the oversight of the two entities working together, and the oversight that nothing is getting missed, and things get out of hand like it did before.
I, I...
So, I wouldn't, excuse me, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, when Al and Dave were talking, and we're going to coordinate that through Public Works, does that, please clarify the payment of that, those services? The ag lime, the seeding? And how was that handled before? Is this a change, or is this normal? I mean, is this, you know, the same as it was before?
I don't know on the minor, Al could probably speak to that, the overseeding and stuff, but I know if he needed ag lime, we would reimburse their purchase of the ag lime, or if he needed black dirt.
Okay. I just want to know how it was, and if we're doing it the same, or if it's an increased cost to the city?
Some of the overseeding will probably be a little different, and that'd be probably a new area for us, I mean, other than we provided some of the inputs to that before. But in the past, they've done that within their maintenance contracts.
So, this will be a cost savings for Flaw? The cost seems, sounds to me like it's being transferred from Flaw to the city.
That part of it, and, you know, I guess, that's a variable item, but it could have been in our agreement previously transferred over if it was significant enough, that $2,500 threshold, but they did do a lot of that before.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
And it's been pretty, I mean, we've had good informal interaction with Flaw in the past, and so, we, you know, like, you know, ag lime, or minor improvement, or whatever the issue is, I mean, a lot of times, we've talked through that, and it seemed like we were able to find ways. Another, I think, communication piece that's important, and I know Flaw's discussed this a little bit, maybe you guys can comment it on a little more, is we have the ones that are outlined in the memo, but that's more of a Flaw, you know, city communication strategy, and there's been some discussion on your part, just because you've got a lot of different user groups and constituencies, to maybe have an internally-focused fields committee that, you know, can provide you feedback as well. So, I don't know if you guys have advanced that discussion at all, but that's something that might be helpful, too.
Well, as we stated earlier, that, you know, we are putting together a committee for Fenway, there'll be the users, one user for each sport, out there, and that individual will be appointed either by their president or their board for baseball, fast pitch, lacrosse, and football at this point. And those individuals will sit, the two chair, Paul Kozak is the chair, a Fenway has been, and we'll go from there. You know, problems arise, and, you know, it's, it's all... And our user groups need to come to us when there's a bigger problem than what, you know, is portrayed. We have had discussion, we had discussion in June, you know, about Field Five, Field and stuff, and the Fenway Advisory Board, I have my copy of my minutes of that, and my discussion was curtailed at that time. So, we'll try it this way, we'll go from there. I guess that's about all I can say at this point.
I've got a question. Is this plan for maintenance a good plan? I mean, I've got some turf experts here. Are we doing enough? I mean, is what's outlined here going to sustain healthy fields at Fenway, or do we need to look at implementing anything else?
I think that, from an agronomy perspective, the city will be pleasantly surprised at the end game here. We're going to be putting down some fertilizer for time, people keep bringing up overseeding. You know, if the turf is healthy and it's being fed, that's going to reduce your need for overseeding. Of course, in the wear areas, you're going to need a little additional work, absolutely. But I think these plans are solid.
All right. And then, what, where are we covered, or who covers, like, just damage, you know, intentional, unintentional? You know, they're out there with a big tournament, and it's wet and muddy, and, you know, half a field gets tore up. I mean, is there coverage for something like that, or do we have to go in and redo that on our own, or where are we at with something like that?
I mean, typically, I mean, you're not going to see, you know, if a truck drives, let's say the scenario happens, a truck drives through Fenway Fields and ruts it up, or something like that, I mean, that's an extraordinary cost. I mean, we are the insurance provider on the site, so if someone did that, or burned the concession stand down, or some big event, I mean, that'd be a claim we would submit to our insurance. I'd say the likely scenario is, you know, the balance of things, I mean, tend to fall into that maintenance category that, you know, either gets picked up within the maintenance contract or the agreement, or some of this, you know, supplemental work that we work back and forth.
I think to that, too, I think when you, in our last meeting with the Flaw Executive Board, I did ask a question about what's your policy, or how do you manage or maintain when field conditions are not favorable for play, so that you aren't, you know, on purpose just, you know, destroying the field if it's too wet? Some people can just play through that. I know, I did a lot of research on what other cities and communities do, and they have a pretty strict policy where, you know, if it's really saturated, games are canceled, because that's going to provide deterioration beyond what should be done. So, I know Flaw said they do enforce that, I don't know if you have a written policy or something that you can provide, but there shouldn't be any extreme damages. Like Jack mentioned, you are going to get your heavy wear and tear in certain areas just from the game of the, for playing the sports, but there shouldn't be any significant damages for improper use.
If the fields are that wet, that they're going to get damaged, it's unsafe for the kids to go there, so we don't, tournaments are a challenge, because there are teams coming from far away who pay money to play, so it can be a challenge, but usually those are in the middle of the summer, and the fields are pretty well under control and in solid condition, so it takes a lot to get them to where they can play.
Or we delay the games during tournaments, you know, for an hour, hour and a half, whatever it might be, people don't have the radar and such. Like Paul said, they've always done very well during tournaments and stuff. You know, good examples, like, the football tournament this last year, which was the last play date, there was snow out there, and Aaron knows it, he was out there, the kids were playing, and, you know, they got ripped up. There's nothing you can do about it. I mean, that's part of wear, that's part of the game, and, you know, it does need to be in areas reseeded this spring, as I mentioned, we talked about in the last meeting, so. Jim, I think, was there, and Jamie, and the four of us. Yeah?
I have a question. So, the bids that are in front of us have some variable items related to frequency of mow. To the extent that additional mows will increase the cost to Flaw, what's the plan to come to consensus on frequency of mow, and what the right, you know, when would we order another mow, and what does that look like?
So, that's a good question. Part of, with this new arrangement, Flaw would work with the selected contractor on a, pretty much a schedule of maintenance, that they would, the contractor would put together and supply, they'd work together with Flaw. That scheduled maintenance would be something that the city would like to see and sign off on that contract, so we're in agreement with what they're agreeing to. So, that's included in here, and that's just working with Flaw, sitting down with the contractor, just making sure we're all on the same page and comfortable with that set number of mows, or who does make the call on an additional mow. You know, presumably, that's going to be Flaw, and just making sure that we're all on the same page with that. So, we'd get a provided maintenance schedule. And again, I think another key point is making sure that the fields and the complexes are maintained to city standards, so city can provide a copy of city standards for maintenance to Flaw to make sure that that's being met. You know, I know there could be some special requests, like push mow the infield of Field Five. You know, that looks great aesthetically, but from a playability standpoint, it might not be necessary if we can use a nice zero-turn lawnmower to do the job. So, that's probably would meet city standards, and if there's something beyond that expectation, you know, maybe there's a little additional cost from a contractor to go in with a push mower. I think those would be things that Flaw would want to, you know, be responsible to decide on and be willing to pay for.
I think one of the reasons we got to this situation is because Flaw was handling it, and the city wasn't aware. So, in those situations, how are we going to make sure that the city is aware that that kind of stuff is happening? You know, Flaw's done a great job, so it's not about bashing anybody, I just don't want to get back into a situation where the communication didn't happen, because that's what, that's all that happened here, is there was no communication.
So, I think the level one communication that's recommended, city staff, so it's either be myself and/or Dave Adams, that we've talked about, being in the communication on a weekly basis, so we know. I think, I think one piece that may be for discussion yet this evening is what records or maintenance records will the city require, or per our management agreement, we have access to all books and records. So, I know we've had some challenges getting previous maintenance records, so maybe accumulating some of that, or requiring or requesting that on a weekly basis or monthly basis might be helpful.
I think any kind of bill is paid, we should get, we should get a copy of what they, what they were built for, so that we can see what they did, and it has to happen every single time.
I think as, and I'll, we'll figure it out tonight, you know, but I think, from a goals perspective, I think in the ideal world, what we'd like to see is, you know, consensus that we have a good working recommendation, we're going in the right direction. It would give then Flaw the latitude to sort of negotiate final terms with a preferred vendor. And then, I think, sort of what we'll call winter discussion would be, what do we want our maintenance records to look like? You know, I mean, we don't want to, you know, have a record or a requirement that isn't helpful for us, but they also need to understand what's help, you know, what is helpful and what it is we're expecting that way, and so, going forward, we can be more consistent with that. So, I think just mutually agreeable maintenance records would be something we would work on through the winter. But I think the contemporary issue is, is are we on the right track? And then, in that situation, it would be incumbent upon them to kind of negotiate final terms, because like the extra mowings, the council member Bain referenced, you know, this was bid as 26, you know, mowings from kind of a, you know, theoretical season. We do the same thing with our city parks, where we have a fairly significant mowing contract for those, and we provide our best estimate on number of mows per year, but if you get a dry period in the summer, that can be less, if you start early in the year, it can certainly be more. And so, there is some variability to that, and I think that's an important part of the contract discussion, is having your base level of mows, and then what's your cost per extra mow? I mean, they might want to go every five days at a certain point in the year, it might be, might be, you know, every 10 days at another time of the year, so I think those are something that has to have flexibility built into the contract.
I had a comment for Jamie. In our last working meeting, we narrowed the contractors down to these four, and as I understand, it's up to Flaw now to pick one of these four, which we haven't done yet, but either you or the park board has recommended one, can you tell us, or tell everybody else which one and why?
Dave, do you want to speak to that one, maybe? 25, 26? 25, 26? You talked about?
That's one you recommended to them?
No, that's the one that we kind of had talked about from the internally.
I don't think we have a definitive recommendation. I think, you know, we're, we're happy to be deferential, you know, and I think what we're looking for is that, you know, we would have some final say, you know, but from my understanding, the vendors that have been talked about here, and we didn't want to make this about a vendor selection thing tonight, because, like, there, there could be a negotiated component to what you do afterwards between multiple vendors, and I don't know, you necessarily want to erode your ability to do that, but I think, it seemed like the vendors... But I think it seemed like the vendors that we thought, you know, represented well in the process were similar to what you guys thought. But I think that's, you know, can be discussed.
I've got a question.
Be more than happy to give you my thoughts. I don't know if you asked me questions about all four of them, but I'm not going to tell you all of which, which one I want to recommend. But I can give you the positive and negative of each one of these companies if you'd like.
I got a question, maybe probably just pointed right at Jack, but the fertilizing. What, does it benefit us to get the soil tested first to identify what type of fertilizer is best used? Or is there one standard?
I think every contractor should be providing soil samples, tests.
Okay, is that part of the bid that we're going to be putting out?
That was part of the discussion quite some time ago. But I also know that just understanding soils that we have in this area and utilizing 50% or greater slow release nitrogen product, you're going to enhance your fields. The problem with just saying throw down three pounds of nitrogen without qualifying it as a slow release material, you could throw down quick release nitrogen that doesn't cost much at all. You can make a ton of money, but you're not helping out your field because it burns quickly and the dirt burns through the nitrogen. It leaks through the soil and it volatilizes, it disappears. So you have to have high-end products. So you can't, you really can't look at this fertilization free application, 17800, 11290. Well, the 11290, they could be still making, you know, 15% margin, let's say. But they use a high-end product that's going to be the best for the turf because it's super slow.
So it would really benefit us to put some parameters in there of what?
I think there are parameters in there that it has to be 50% or greater slow release product.
Okay.
But not all the bids knew what they were talking about either after I did some analysis.
Two questions I have is with the bid selections, whichever bid comes in that is chosen, do we pay? Is the city paying that? Or with the partnership, do we, does it transfer funds to FLOW to pay? Or how does that work?
No, basically, we, there's never been an exchange that way.
Okay.
FLOW has the maintenance contract.
Okay.
They pay it, but they then also realize the revenue associated with the fields.
Okay. And then the other question is on the, on the box of things that we're doing, should we put in another one for other, like for trees that need to be replaced? Or how, how is that going to?
It's in the agreement, isn't it, that the city's on capital improvement?
That'd be a city responsibility. So I don't know that we need to convey that to this particular group. I think if we were going to contract that, if we contracted through Public Works and we would just have it done. Or we maybe do it in-house at the purchase of trees, we just evaluate that. But I think it's a good point that there could be some additional, you know, trees installed out there. Some of landscaping's died off over, over the years. And there probably should be some emphasis, you know, put to that.
On page, on page two underneath the levels of communication, there's a paragraph that talks about the selected contractor, Public Works or city staff, and FLOW will do a walk-through of the complex.
Okay.
Double K, there's five dead trees, there's piles of eggplant here, there's this, that, there's weeds in here. And then we'll prioritize it. I mean, it'll go on city funding and time and what we can get done. So I mean, safety obviously would be first, but hey, we want to get rid of that dirt pile. Well, maybe that can wait till 2019. But at least then FLOW, the city and the contractor all understand what stuff is kind of above and beyond the basic maintenance, you know, which would kind of fall back. Either a partnership between FLOW themselves or contracting work to the contractor or Public Works doing themselves. So I think it'll help everybody out to kind of grasp where we're at with, just besides, you know, because this is basically just a basic maintenance contract. It has nothing to do with improvements or getting stuff back to, you know, previous.
Avery? I got a question for Jamie. You know, when the contracts went out in the bidding process, and it's specific to the fertilization, as Jack mentioned, was that the only spec that was in there that it had to be 50% slow release? Or did they have a spec sheet that said it had to be, you know, whatever fertilizer is, you know, nitrogen, this and this on each application? Was there a spec sheet? Because clearly there isn't apples to apples here when you look at these numbers.
You're right, you're right. The numbers reflect the price of the product that they're putting down. I did see a few of the labels. And the specs were three pounds of nitrogen minimum annually. And that's based off the University of Minnesota fertilizer recommendations. 50% or greater slow release material. And then soil tests would dictate whether or not you need phosphorus or potassium.
So they did, they didn't have a spec sheet that they were actually going on?
There were some guidelines there.
So clearly these numbers here are, as you stated, a company that has access to a higher-end fertilizer and wants to use that because they know it will make the job better. So that's what, do you think these numbers are reflecting then?
When I, I did the, I ran through the process myself, see what it would cost to apply fertilizer on 25 acres of property using Google Maps. And I estimated it was going to be about $9,600 for the product alone, using a high-end material. That, that wasn't paying anybody to put it down. But that was just for a high-end product so that we end up with a pre-empted complex over there. I could do that for three grand, but we burned through that nitrogen that we've been wasting the product.
It's a flash.
Yeah.
Are the, are the fields usable right after an application or does?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Jack, just wondering, or Jamie, did anybody check to see if these people actually have license to apply fertilizer and pesticides? Because I guarantee you one company on that sheet does not. I just wondered.
I looked on that one website and I didn't clarify all of them, but that's something as we have a starting base point, that's part of our selection process discussion, that city staff and FLOW will narrow down even more and ask some of those more detailed questions as we narrow the pool. So I think I know that and a couple other criterion outside of costs were some things we're going to talk about. So I think that'll be on, we'll make sure we verify that.
If you're purchasing power, if you buy three times as much fertilizer as the high bidder, you probably get a little price break.
Oh.
And I appreciate you ordered it like last week or this coming season and get a price break also.
Yeah.
So there is business practices to get those prices down.
Absolutely. I used to, I used to manage a high-end property. I know about really order planning. But I also know that I teach for the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency a course on best management practices for turf and landscape.
Yep.
And we follow the University of Minnesota recommendations. We talk about slow release materials. We talk about all the best cultural practices to have a safe, environmentally friendly property. And I think that was one of the recommendations on the bid process too, that the.
We need to go to that class, yes.
Yeah, fantastic. Save you some coin, guaranteed of that.
Well, we, I go to the, down to the civic center, the convention center every year, so classes too. So that gets.
For the pesticide research, yeah.
Yeah, so just add some research, research. But yeah, you'd be surprised on who has a license and who doesn't. That's what I was saying.
So as you, I had a question as well along this line, but where you see complete zone fertilization and where you see they, obviously they didn't put it there, so I'm assuming they, oh, okay. So on the other ones?
I believe, I didn't verify, this was as of last Friday, but I believe the other two also provide their own. But again, that's one last checks and balances as we're finalizing our decision. So this is to get kind of the baseline idea of where we're looking at.
And then will they be given a direction on what they need to apply, working together or?
I think that's, Jack, I know generally speaking, like Dave said, this is just a basic maintenance contract where best management practices are followed. These contractors do this at other complexes and have other clients. So it should be kind of their expertise and knowledge that they should really be supplying the city or FLOW the maintenance, their recommendations and maintenance schedules. We did require labels of all the fertilization and weed control products that they would be using. So we have those that we are reviewing as part of the selection process of these top four. So I'm not a lawn care fertilization expert by any means, but Jack thankfully has been very helpful in that. So using his expertise and understanding, is this a good product or not? And is this going to benefit, is it a fair price? So those are those final pieces of analysis that we're doing as we continue in this process. Again, as, as Aaron kind of mentioned before, I think the overall goal is, is this the right direction we're going in? And kind of making sure all parties are comfortable with where we're at. And the next steps being identifying the selected contractor, FLOW then negotiating terms with them, working with the city to make sure we're on the same page with everything, having a city standards provided to FLOW and FLOW, you know, we have the actual maintenance schedule and then developing this communication plan. So if that's kind of, you know, that's, I think, the overall goal for tonight. There's still the selection process and I think we can continue that fairly soon here in the next week or so.
Oh, go ahead, Mike. So Jack, if you look under the weed control, there's one company that says weekly basis. All the rest of them say spot spray throughout complex as needed. Is there really a weekly basis needed for something like that? I just don't know enough.
It depends what you're going after. If you're going to, so KLC a roundup product, something comes out, you're going to want to knock it down, fly and save. But there are certain periods of the year that are great for controlling your perennial weeds and it's great other times of year to take care of your annual weeds. And then you have to take into account if you're overseeding so you don't suppress that overseeding. I believe in spot spraying rather than a wall-to-wall application because wall-to-wall wastes product. And you don't know what you don't know. If you go wall-to-wall, you might not even have a weed problem. So you have to see the weed first from my perspective. But that's, that's the way I'm managing.
Thank you.
You don't want to see my lawn.
Well, if you come to the course. In fact, there I offer a class with a watershed about best management practice for your lawn. You're lucky. Happy to teach, I make time for people.
Exactly.
Just, just to clarify that, that is specifically talking about like the hay lawn areas or the morning tracks and that kind of thing?
Sounds good, thank you.
Not, not the grass areas, that's the two applications.
So in order, do we take it whole?
Oh, go ahead.
I have a question on, and it doesn't pertain to the application of fertilizers, more pertaining to the financial part, the fees are set by FLOW, is that correct?
That is correct.
And is there any review on the part of the council or any, on the part of the city of those fees? If I have memory certainly correct, weren't there some complaints where baseball versus football versus whatever as to what they're charging?
I'm sure there's plenty of conversations to be had in that area. But they, they, they basically work with their user groups and their sports and they sort of have a negotiated amount for whatever field time those particular groups are looking for. And, you know, that's more of an in-house thing for FLOW. And I think the thing, Councilman Brainerd, that you might have been referring to is in the past, the question was if you're a non-affiliated FLOW group and you want to rent a field, what is the price? And they have been providing us with their rental rates for those non-FLOW activities. So we've been able to review that.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to Councilmember, a little bit further, Councilmember Brainerd's. And it picks up a little bit on what Jason had talked about as well. So, and now there's a wide range of prices here, which is something I'd like to keep in mind as we move forward, is what is, we're unbundling services and anytime you're unbundling services and having two service providers, that can have an increase in overall cost. I just want to keep that in mind as we're moving forward and I think we need to look at that as a city. I know your only revenue source is you do a little bit of gambling, otherwise it's fees to your sports. And I think some evaluation of what the overall impact is per sport would be just, we should keep that in mind and make sure that we're leaving you in a spot that is still acceptable. And we're, we're making some asks and clearly you're a partner in that, but let's just make sure we're, we're comfortable where the overall result is on impact on families.
I also, but I completely agree with what you just said, but I believe all of these are below what FLOW has been paying each year.
Well, it's hard to say at this point, we're moving away because we have taken care of everything on that list, on those boxes. And right now, you only take care of three items, basically, on this. We still got to determine what to take care of, cost to take care of the rest of that list. So for us to say, or you to say at this point in time it's going to be less would be just a big guess.
I think that's part of what needs to, I think that's part of.
Page here.
Yep.
Since the contractor could take care of three things, a lot of the things going on here that we don't have an exact handle on yet. And then we still have to prepare with the contractors bidding, find out where we're going to come out with weed more or less. I agree.
So I'd like to have, as we get further.
I understand perfectly. I just don't, I just don't necessarily agree that it's going to be more, that's all.
I think the one area that we're probably going to run into, we've looked at the numbers that run the numbers, is on the additional mowings. To be very honest, because it's all going to be predicated on what kind of weather we have, you know, during the growing season, you're going down, type of fertilizer that, you know, we'd like to see out there also. You're going to be cutting grass more often.
How often were you mowing last, last year, this, this year, the previous couple of years?
Thirty-seven mows in the softball complex, the quad. And then there were two less on the football and fields and the outer ring.
So between 35 and 37, and that's, that's consistent over the last few years?
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much, been about the same length. You know, we also say on here in the maintenance bids, we've got the names of each and every one of the companies that you're looking at and are looking down to. I've asked, and I do see that, you know, it is on here, but the aeration, that is something that was not, we're not looking to do anything on that ourselves as well. We're asking for the city to continue to take care of that particular.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that internally and we feel that, you know, we've got the equipment to, to do that and, you know, do it on a decent basis. So I mean, that's something we can do easily.
At this point, we're willing, like, undertake A, B, and C with us going to be further negotiating with whoever the selected contractors are on with the city or our blessing.
So can I just ask, if your, your, your normal number of mows is 37, why are all these bids for 26?
Well, 26 is what most commercial, pretty kind of commercial.
But didn't we set the specs for the bids?
Well, all fields are totally different, Jack. You know, you, fields need to be cut before there's tournaments.
Yeah.
It's, you know, requisites that we get straight from, say, for instance, the high school league, when they host tournaments and the tournaments that they even will host out there. So that's really where you come into, you know, the additional mowings that might take place.
But if it's been consistent, which is what I thought I heard, what, I don't, I still don't understand that. Why would we request a bid for only 26?
Because.
So the reason, I can speak to that, just at the time this went out, that we didn't have maintenance records or didn't know the number of mows annually from FLOW until, just until last, last week after it's already been done. So it was a process to kind of get to where we are today. We based it off 26 mows because that's what generally speaking contractors will do. 26 mows, some of them add plus four, you know, give a couple cushion mows in there. So that's why, end of last week, I went back to contractors to break down the additional mow cost if we had to mow the whole complex again. So let's say we have to mow the whole complex 30 times. But what we found out out of those 37 mows at Fenway, sometimes it's just the quad for a tournament. Or, you know, we don't have that breakdown of how many full complex mows versus just doing Field Five for a baseball tournament, et cetera. So those are those additional à la carte costs that can be added on if needed. So that's where, that's where we ended up, ended up last week.
That's, that explains it, thank you.
26 is about one per week in a typical season. Is that what we kind of benchmarked out of?
Yeah, one per week.
Which isn't enough at my house. So how could that be enough on fields? I can't get by with once a week in the summer.
But we'll have better around it, so we'll be able to bench like that going forward to see what the.
I think it's in that side.
Twenty-six weeks, Jack, yearly are like townhouse complexes, commercial sites. Others have times that, you know, they want to mow more oftenly depending on weather, the season. Double mows within a week during hours.
I guess I'm just trying to financially and aesthetically be prepared. I guess I'm just trying to financially and aesthetically be prepared to provide the best fields that we can, you know, for our kids, for tournaments, for high school, for everybody, you know, for the community and I just, I hate to see us decide on these bids specifically of, right off the bat, we know we're going to need more mows, you know, and just to be able to work those in and just, you know, be prepared, think forward, not have to think later that we didn't do something.
What is the, what is the baseball and softball season over with?
About the end of July.
So August, September, October, then you're back to maybe weekly?
Like once, once, yeah, and sometimes it was like every 10 days, to be honest.
So, I mean, you might go every five days, May, June, July, but then you back off to weekly.
That's correct.
And these contractors will do that?
From what I understand, yes.
Okay, all right, well, that helps, that helps my, my question, thanks.
It also asks people...
We're paying this out of these people's budgets.
I understand that.
Because our kids are paying for it, so we have to be very judicial with who we order extra mows.
No, I, and I understand that, I just think to be prepared, be prepared rather than have to figure it out later is all I'm saying.
So at the one Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, when you were, Jack, you were looking at, I think it was Camlon or something like that, who was going to put something down, but it was mostly the stuff that goes away, the fast-acting, which goes away right away and stuff like that, which would also make a difference, it'd mean you'd have to, from what you explained to me, you'd have to mow a lot more right after that and if, but if you had the proper feeding, it wouldn't necessarily have happened that way, correct?
Slow, consistent feeding, but it also has to do with soil temperature and the growth cycle of the plant.
Right.
If you get greater growth in the spring, the fall, in the summertime, you may go through a period of time where you don't mow your yard and as far as how often you mow, it's all based upon your expectations, Dave brought up a great point, you know, the expectations on the fields after July 30th are pretty low, so it won't be mowed, won't be maintained and even on the big fields, it might be low other times of year, so it really, it's all on expectations and I'm sure any reputable contractor is going to be thrilled to have this opportunity and going to play fair.
I, I'm sure they are, I, I'm just asking the question because, the little, the little that I know about mowing my grounds.
Well, your expectations are pretty high on that.
Yes, they may be, they may be, I don't like it to get too long.
I think there's some more unknowns as well, I mean, TruGreen was used in the past, I mean, so they were using a quick release, so we don't know how the slow release nitrogen's going to work, the irrigation's been spotty at best for the last few years, we don't know what that mixture's going to be, so even his 37, it might be 26, it might be 45, I don't think anybody in this room will know what that is, but once you get one year down, then you'll know, you'll know, okay, we're going to have to mow, but that's kind of fertilizer with that irrigation, we're going to have to mow every five days, June, July, or we'll have to, you know, it'll be dialed in, but I, I don't think any of us really know exactly how it's going to react until we...
I'm just reading this and it kind of says weekly, so I'm kind of just going off what it says, but the explanation now of sometimes it's five days, sometimes it's 10 days, obviously the 26 will probably suffice with a few extra.
And I think to Al's point, it is commercial, you know, like Lakeside Park, we mow weekly, but sometimes by that sixth, seventh day, it's getting pretty hairy, but it's a park so you don't have to, it's not that big of a deal, it's just longer green grass, but on a baseball field, yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have to knock it down, but to Jack's point, on a ball field, you may need it at two inches, but then in the summer in the football fields, you can leave it at three, you know, so, you know, then in July, kind of flip-flops, you know, so it just depends on...
Depends on weather and student.
Makes sense, makes sense.
Yeah, I guess my, my question is as far as the 26 mows and then you talked about there's ball field mows and there's the total complex mow, as far as FLA is concerned, because it's their dollars, if there's 23 mows, do they get reimbursed for, or is this the fixed cost that every one of these contractors is putting in?
It's ultimately subject to the negotiation, the final agreement, if it's like our mowing contracts, you...
I mean, I would think they get invoice per mow, well, I'm going to give you 26 mows, but the weather was pretty favorable on my part, so you only get 20 mows this year.
It's a, it's a risk on both sides, pretty much, you think about snow plowing...
Yeah, same way, if it doesn't snow, it's...
They're going to give you a contract for the winter, if you get one inch during the winter, you're coming out pretty good, you get a foot of snow every week, you're coming out pretty good.
But do they give, my question is, they want to charge you for additional mows if needed, right? Whereas in the snow plowing thing, you're paying one fee, if it snows more, they're out, but this way, you guys are out.
I don't think you're going to see less than 26 mows.
That was my question.
I don't either. That'd be really rare to see less than 26 mows because it's probably going to be more than that just to get through the April to October time.
Especially if something that's irrigated.
Yeah.
So, so maybe that 26 weeks should be higher, if your average was 35 or 37 before?
And like you say, we'll negotiate that with the contractor, you know, go from there.
I would believe you.
We know what dollars we have, like Myron's saying, we can't go back to our sports and charge them anymore.
Right.
We only have a limited amount of funds and that's it.
But that's why I think you'd want to protect yourself with more mows.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I would believe that if the bid's based off of 26 weekly mows and then their per time, it'd be added on, so it'd be, you know, if it's 30 mows, it's going to, every one of their prices are going to go up, you know, the same exact way as...
But at least they're covered going in because they're going to charge all the organizations that want to use these fields, once they enter into their contract, they come up short.
I agree.
And I think that's part of the negotiation, I mean, kind of back to Jamie's point is, we went ahead and got bids just to kind of get a rough idea of dollar amounts.
But these are just rough numbers right now.
These are rough, I mean, they, the FLA and the contractor they pick can negotiate, they can say, okay, we want to negotiate off of 30 mows or we want to negotiate off of per time.
I just don't want them coming up short because we had a lot of rain that year and had to mow more often or we have better fertilizer this year and we have to mow more often.
And we won't be able to mow the rest.
Well, is there, is there consensus that people are okay with the general working recommendation that's talked about here tonight and we'll continue to kind of, you know, from a Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission and council perspective, you know, continue to let you know where the discussions are evolving with contractor selection and final agreements and all of that?
I'd like the city involved in the negotiation as well.
We, we can be aware of and I guess that's, however, whatever you feel about that, I guess.
Who wants to win, do what?
I'd like the city involved with the negotiations with the contractor as well.
Okay. You mean after the contractor?
Yeah, once the contractor's picked, to help try to get that price down, I mean, you're, you're dealing with the city and, and, you know, it's, technically it's the city's field and so we want to make sure that the city tries to push, push, they can probably push a little harder than you guys can, try to get the best price possible.
That's fine, Mike, always open to talking.
Anything else to bring up or, we'll adjourn the meeting, a motion to adjourn, someone? Have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?